Good afternoon, everybody. We'll call our meeting to order. And then I'm gonna hand this over to Mayor Hill.
We're gonna go ahead and get started with our meeting. First up, notice of call, joint city-county commission meeting to Commissioners Mary Lawson-Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the Palatka City Commission is to be held on Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, at the Board of County Commissioners Meeting Chambers at 2509 Krill Avenue, Suite 100, Palatka, Florida, to commence at 6:00 P.M. Purpose of the meeting is to hold a joint meeting of the City of Palatka City Commission, Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. Please govern yourselves accordingly. At this time, we'll have our roll call.
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
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 Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our March 27, 2018 meeting?
Motion to approve.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum, a second by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any unreadiness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. We'll now have our invocation and our pledge. We're gonna ask Mr. Turner if you would lead us, Commissioner Turner if you would lead us in the pledge, and we're gonna ask Terry Suggs if you would lead us in the invocation.
Please stand at this time.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here this evening as an elected body with the issues at hand, and I hope that we can actually do things that are pleasing not only to those that are in our community, but also to you yourself. And I ask that your hand guide us here tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now open for public comment. I have just one card up here. Please try to limit it to three minutes, and, you know, no personal attacks.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, our next item on the agenda is the minutes from March 27, 2018.
Will we approve them at order?
Thank you, sir.
I'm awake now.
That's all right. You keep an eye on me.
Appreciate that, Counselor.
It's been a long day.
Okay, and I'll... I have Crystal. You say it.
Escate.
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 Okay. Yeah, if you'd come forward.
Good afternoon. Before we get started, I'd like to...
You'll need to pull that a little closer to you, so we can hear you.
I would like to make sure everyone have one of the little packets that we presented first. Does everyone have a folder with the information in it? Great, thank you.
You're gonna have to speak into that mic.
Okay, I just was trying not to. On behalf of Northeast Florida Community Action, our Board of Directors, our Executive Director, Ms. Bernita K. McNair, we are here tonight. We are a private 501(c)(3) nonprofit social service agency that has been housed and providing supportive services in Putnam County since 2005. Our mission is to collaborate with community partners to stabilize vulnerable households and empower families in Northeast Florida to achieve self-sufficiency through education, employment, and advocacy. We have put together a brief packet of information concerning our programs and services that include, but are not limited to, our weatherization program, our family self-sufficiency program, our Databuster Summer Youth Program, and many of you may recognize us for our low-income home energy assistance program. Today, we stand before you requesting assistance with low or no cost office space, so that we may continue to provide these services, programs, and many more. We are currently utilizing about 1,500 square feet of space that is not conducive to our long-term goals and vision here in Putnam County. You may say, "Why should we help you?" Good question. What makes us unique from other social service agencies or training facilities is the fact that we can provide the training, partner with other training vendors... And hold your seats, here's the best part, we are the funding agency. On average, we see approximately 30-plus clients per day for utility assistance, 40-plus clients per week for assistance with school or other vocational trainings, and much more. So what do you say, City of Palatka, County of Putnam? We need your help. That's it.
That's a very good presentation.
Yes. Thank you.
And thank you. The customers that we serve are primarily single-family households led by the female. So what we're trying to do is to train those females to better take care of their households, but to also train the men that's missing from those households to help those young men obtain jobs. On behalf of the Board of Directors, the Putnam County Board of Commissioners, you have a seat on our Board of Directors, and that seat is currently vacant. So what we would like for you to do is to appoint a person, hopefully one of you, that can go to Jacksonville and advocate for the great people of Putnam County. So think about it, and decide what individual you would like to be responsible and govern our $8 million agency, because we serve more than 2,000 individuals each year in this area, and what we're trying to do is change lives and help transform this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Where do you meet in Jacksonville, what part of town?
We meet, it's close to downtown, in the Midtown Center. We meet once a month, the last Thursday of each month, at 4:00.
Last Thursday, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Russo, Russo.
I'm just calling Vito.
Thank you, Commissioners. I've never seen so many Commissioners in one place. Do I need to give my name, address, or anything?
Name and address.
Vito Russo, 415 Emmett Street, Palatka, Florida, 32177. I just thought, I saw the agenda, and I noticed it had festivals on it, so I thought I'd take a moment and take the opportunity to explain what the South Historic Neighborhood Association is trying to develop in order to contribute to revitalization of the community. And it's called Palatka Porch Fest. So this will be the first Saturday of December this year, if we get the permits, and what we're planning on doing is cordoning off the heart of the South Historic District, and we're gonna get local musicians playing a wide spectrum of music genre, everything from bluegrass to zydeco. Zydeco music is Cajun music. And so if we play a wide spectrum of music, everything from country, and gospel, and jazz, and reggae, and hip-hop, then basically we're inviting all of the neighborhoods, all the folks in our community, to the event. And so we're gonna have local food vendors, we're going to have local organizations there, we're hoping to get Lee Conley House, Domestic Violence Awareness, we're hoping to get the Humane Society, the American Legion Hall, Health Department, et cetera, et cetera. So one thing that I can assure you, this is going to be a beautiful, beautiful, family-friendly event that's gonna become very popular in a very short order, and it will be an annual event. So I hope that the South Historic Neighborhood Association, we're a serious organization, and we try to do things in a professional manner. So we hope to have a nice, smooth-run festival. It's gonna be just a Saturday afternoon, it'll be just for four or five hours on Saturday afternoon, so we'll be shutting down before it gets dark, and should be something that everybody would enjoy, at least we hope so. This is something that Jacksonville does, and we've been fortunate enough that Jacksonville's Historic District, Springfield Historic District, has been very gracious with us and has mentored us quite a bit on how they put their festival on. So we should have a fairly smooth-running Palatka Porch Fest, so thank you for your time.
You shut the streets down when you do this?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna shut the core down. The main, the main streets, which will be, for the South Historic District, the main streets are gonna stay open, which will be River Street will stay open, Laurel Street stays open, Krill/9th Street stays open, and then the far southern street is called Morris, that'll stay open as well. So it's just the core blocks of the South Historic District that's going to be cordoned off from car traffic. You'll hear more about it as we get...
Any comments?
You said it was the first Saturday in December?
Yes, sir. First Saturday in December, just an afternoon, afternoon event, play about four hours, we're gonna try to get the high school band involved, they might march through the streets and play what they've been practicing. I've already talked to the band director over there, so it should be really cool, should be really, really cool.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. We'll move to review and discussion of topics, which we know the number-one thing is meandering, bounties, and enclaves. Do we have any comments?
Let's move on to the presentation of the maps. Mr. Suggs, I think you gave us a map as it relates to the enclaves. There's been some conversation, I think, between the city and the county that relates to this matter. Can you kind of sum us up as to what the progress has been since the last meeting?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This map was provided by the city. We got this yesterday afternoon, so we haven't actually had an opportunity to review the map itself, and we haven't had much of an opportunity with each person's schedule being what it has been, workload being what it has been, so there hasn't been any further discussions since the last meeting.
Has there, has there been any change in position as it relates to the potential for dealing with the enclaves, or also dealing with an urban service boundary?
The only conversation that we've had was one that goes back to an original conversation where we're just gonna currently be looking at the water and wastewater of these enclave areas before we got too much deeper into it, but, you know, we take, as staff, we take direction from the Commission, so, but that's where we're at today.
Yeah, my understanding from the last meeting, we were also looking at, we're looking at garbage collection, we're looking at the whole thing in totality. I reviewed the minutes from the last meeting, I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at the comprehensive, we were taking a comprehensive outlook at this as opposed to a fractionalized outlook, to see if there was an opportunity for us to square the boundaries off. It's become a hot, hotbed topic around the state at this time, and I think that, you know, the time has come for us to really, to get past where we are, to a point where there's some progress made as it relates to, you know, to what we've got in place. And so my hope would be that what we discussed at our last meeting is that we will look at the benefits of squaring the boundaries off in totality and seeing what areas can be, there's common ground, to move forward on those areas, and if there are no common ground, then to go ahead and at least put the baby to bed before we continue to have the same dance over and over.
That's true. Yes, sir.
Well, I thought we had assigned people to tasks from the last meeting, and the last meeting was in March.
Yes, sir.
And there's no movement at all on this in three months?
I mean, I have a problem, and this is the same problem that I have...
Let's hear it.
...that we bring...
Am I not loud enough?
No.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'll keep it like this.
So I have a major problem, being that, it's kind of the same problem that I've been echoing every time we've had these meetings. It's pointless if every time we come here and we talk about the same thing with no avail or no solutions to what we've talked about. This is what our third meeting, and we've been talking about the service boundary since meeting number one. When are we actually going to make decisions? When are we actually going to move forth with some of these schemes? Because again, if we leave here tonight, and three months later we come back and we're talking about the same thing, what truly have we accomplished? So again, what are we gonna do? And I think before we move forth this day, we need to have some type of solution and some type of commitment, because apparently the commitment that we've had for the last three meetings weigh, it doesn't weigh anything, and I'm concerned.
Yes, sir. Do you have any recommendations? What do you...
I mean, we put it in our staff, and our staff is supposed to bring us back the recommendations, and we're supposed to go from there, but they haven't done that, so what's the problem? I mean, we've given the recommendation.
I think the Commission, the Commission gave direction to staff that would mean that our county administrator, as well as our city manager, should have been given staff direction as it relates to moving forward. With that, we were supposed to have, I guess, the attorneys to look at also the, I guess, whatever legalities as it related to lines or what have you. So I think we need to, I guess, push this off to our county administrator and as our city manager, so they'll be the ones that direct the staff.
Okay, well, I'm...
If it's something that they don't want to do, let's go ahead and put it out there, let's not beat around the bush. Like, I mean, again, this is meeting number three that we've had, which spans over a nine-month time, if not a year, and nothing has happened. If you don't want us to help, or if you don't want to help out, just tell us.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, you wanted to say something?
Yes. I will echo some of those comments, and I think we do need clear direction on all sides. So if I could help, one of the things I would like to know is, is would the county and city be interested in first starting off with closing in the enclaves? To bring those individuals that are in the enclaves right now, would the county be opposed to us doing that? And would that mean closing them in? The attorneys are about to get ready to speak about what it would take to do that, and it's a decision that ultimately both boards are gonna have to decide whether or not they want to do, but if you guys want to move in that direction, I think we do need to talk about that in terms of the services that are first in the enclaves. If you guys are in favor of that, then we need to broaden the conversation to talk about those other services that you may want or may not want to include in the urban services area. And to go to Commissioner Campbell's point, if closing the enclaves is off the table, let's go ahead and say it, if not providing any services outside of water and wastewater within the enclave area isn't on the table, let's go ahead and say it, and if providing services outside of water and wastewater in the urban services area isn't on the table, let's just go ahead and just say it. I think that'll give us clear direction in terms of where we're heading, where we're going. But just keep in mind, closing the enclaves, as the attorneys are probably getting ready to tell us, is going to be a challenge in and of itself, but it's not one that we cannot accomplish if both boards want to move in that direction.
Okay, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, our biggest problem is boundaries. It's not just the urban services, it's the boundaries. No one knows, unless you look at the garbage can, whether you're in the city or if you're in the county, and that's one of our biggest problems. We need to address that as a separate item, I see it, and then the urban services. The services are the services, and we can find out who's gonna get what, where, but first you gotta know where these boundaries are before I believe you can even move on to the enclaves or, or, you know, anything else. I'm, go ahead, please.
But I think that's what we mentioned the last time, and what we were supposed to have been doing was looking at the impacts. That's what we stepped away from the table with, and that's what I'm saying. We need to, from the county administrator, from our city manager, when we leave these meetings, we need to have some people in mind that we need to put with a responsibility that, and some feedback on these things. I mean, we, we keep talking about the same thing, but nothing is happening.
I agree with you, I think that's what we got.
And I know we're all busy.
I think what we have right now is the ball's being tossed back and forth, and we're not saying who's on what team. Let's, if we're going to put, we gotta, let's decide what we want, and then we can decide who we're gonna put on those boards or whatever to take care of it. If what we're wanting first off is to get our boundaries, you know, if that's what our goal is, to set our boundaries, let's, let's work on the boundaries, we'll work on the urban services afterwards. I know it's all connected, but your boundaries, if you know where your boundaries want to be, we can move those a little bit. Am I incorrect? You have a comment? You're giving me that stare.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think that's a $64 question, and nobody has determined. Number one, nobody has told me if it's legal to annex without the property owner agreeing to it. Nobody's, I'm not saying it is or isn't, I'm just saying nobody has answered that question.
Hold on one second.
Mr. Chairman, when you get a chance, I can offer some input on that.
I'll yield, I'll yield the floor to the attorney.
I think we're open for it.
It was my understanding at the last meeting that you asked for clarification on how, what procedures were available in order for an annexation to occur. I provided a memorandum to each of my city commissioners by email and the city manager, and I copied Mr. Manning with that, because since you county commissioners are his client, I thought he would want to provide that to you if he chose to. That memorandum explains the procedures, which are basically limited. One, the legislature, the Florida legislature, could affect your boundaries if it chose to, because it has the power of life or death over all municipalities. It could pass a special act and change your boundaries. Otherwise, the only process for annexation that is not voluntary would involve a referendum of the people of the affected area mandatory, that's a mandatory referendum, and they would have to approve that by majority vote. The municipality would also have the option of conducting a memorandum of the people already in the municipal boundaries, to see if they were in favor of the annexation, but that is an optional remedy or optional procedure. So it would involve passage of an ordinance by the City of Palatka, they are the ones who would have to annex, passage of an ordinance after two public hearings, in addition to the normal adoption process, and then, once the ordinance has been passed, which specified the area that was supposed to be annexed, then a referendum of the individuals, the electorate, the elector, the voters in that, in that annexed, or the area to be annexed, would have to be held at a minimum, and they would have to approve that annexation by majority vote. The memorandum is in a little bit greater detail, but that sums it up. I'll try to answer questions if you have any.
I do have one, Mr. Wilson.
All right.
What about de-annex? If there's an area that's just kind of stuck out there, and it would be better off if it remained in the county, what, what involves with that?
Don't believe anybody asking to look at the annexation, so I don't want to start talking too much on that point.
Just one of those things that could come out.
If it's the annexation, I'll start looking at the annexation.
Yeah, it could come out, I was just, don't add up there, okay. All right, I guess we need to know how we're gonna move here.
Mr. Chair, with all...
Yes, sir.
If I could, with all due respect, to the question of the enclaves and what the impacts would be for the services that were provided, whether it be by city or county, I think it was, it's germane that we now have a map in front of us, so we can actually outline where these, where these meandering bounties are, and where we might want to look at these enclaves, and whether or not we want, what the impact of those services would be. So now that we have this type of information, I'm sure we can start working towards that, but it would, I think it's germane that we have a map to understand where the boundaries are, and what is that we may want to be looking at as far as enclaves, where we can figure out the impacts.
Okay, I guess...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, please.
While I appreciate those comments, I think that it was just made very plain to us that it's, that it's not a city-county issue, it's a city issue. The city has to move forward, and they need to pass an ordinance if they're interested in it, and then they need to put it on the, put it on a ballot for those people to vote on it or not, and unless I missed what was just told to me, then basically, we can talk about this all we want in this meeting, but the city has to take the next step, and the city needs to pass the ordinance, and the city needs to set up the referendum, and if it's successful. And I didn't hear of any other option. And I guess maybe you heard something that wasn't said, because it seems like the impacts are gonna be both on the city and the county, that's the purpose of having the joint meeting, is to determine what, if the county also, I mean, we can pass the ball all day long on what needs to be done as far as next steps, but the reality is, there has to be some articulation between the city and the county as to what the pleasure of both commissions is, and if we're not having that dialogue, then it absolutely makes no sense to even take the next steps and spend the money, because if the county does not have any desire for us to deal with enclaves, or to deal with some of these other issues, or even a desire to square boundaries off and deal with some of these other things, I mean, then it, it changes it. It's clear that we're having a conversation, because we've come to the table saying, hey, we want to square boundaries up, but we've yet to get the input from the county as a whole to say, hey, guys, we're in agreement as it relates to that. Every day that the sheriff and Chief Shaw and his guys go out, they find places where they've got to figure out whose call it is, and most of the time they arrive together, or one arrives beforehand, even if it's not their jurisdiction. The same thing happens with fire and rescue, and sooner or later, it has to be, I mean, somebody's gotta say, well, yes, I'm in favor, and you guys go ahead and move forward and take the next steps, but just for us to come out and take the steps without, you know, not knowing what the county wants on their side, because this is, I mean, it's a, it's a heck of a lot of work that goes into dealing with this, and just to say it's the county's game, or the city's game, if that's the case, then we don't have to be here. So, I mean, it has to be a conversation that goes between the two of us, and while the referendum comes up, it's still issues that start to clear up things for both parties. It's not just a one-sided thing. There are costs associated, there are other things that go into this. When we start talking about using our, our staff to come in to determine what the effects are, that's a lot of work for those guys to go through. When at the end of the day, if it comes back to the county commission, and you guys are like, nah, we don't want it, then it's a waste, it's a bunch of wasted manpower that neither one of us really has the luxury of losing. And so it has to be, the onus is on us, sitting in front here, the dais, as to whether we articulate what it is that we truly want. If we don't want it, then let's stop meeting, because this is the critical issue that we're meeting on, but, I mean, just to say it's a city issue, none of this is a city issue, it's all Putnam County issues, because we're all Putnam Countyans, and we gotta stop doing that. Okay, well, I appreciate your comments, I truly do. Did I misunderstand what you just said, that there's one way to do this, and you just outlined what that was, or did I miss something?
Two ways, but one would involve the legislature taking action and passing a special act. If it's annexation, the annexation would have to take place by action of the city commission, if it's an annexation, and that action would have to be, as I said, first passing an ordinance that proposed the adoption of the area in question. There's, there's the, a couple of extra hearings involved in addition to the normal adoption process, and then, the ordinance would not be effective unless and until it was approved by a referendum of the voters in the area.
And that deals only with forced annexation?
Correct.
Of the property? It does not deal with, it does not deal with squaring off service boundaries, that's done through interlocal?
Also doesn't deal with voluntary annexation?
Right.
Which would be another option for the commission. If the process of trying to force annexation is one that isn't palatable to you, then there is other, the other option of trying to determine if you can arrive at a package of incentives that might make it feasible, might make people want to come into the city, I guess would be a way of saying it, but that, and those incentives could be anything from, well, your imagination, tax abatement, I don't know what, but, you know, if, if, when that referendum is held, quite honestly, and this may not be a strictly legal opinion, but I'm not sure you're gonna get people to vote in favor of annexation just so you can square up the boundaries.
Or to raise their taxes by 6.4 million.
Absolutely, that's the point.
So again, the more viable option probably comes up being an interlocal agreement, which creates the same effect, and actually can be done by way of both of these commissions coming up with some type of agreement.
Which lessens the impact on the citizen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This map that was handed to us, who developed this map?
Property Appraiser's office.
Okay. What do these different colors mean on this map to me? Can someone explain to me that?
Mr. Griffith?
Jonathan Griffith, City of Palatka, Public Works Director. The colors actually refer to separate areas that we looked at three to four years ago under a Department of Economic Opportunity grant, when the city was looking at ways to expand services, and through a program called Economic Diversification, and really the consultant at the time, Urbanomics, just broke it out into specific areas by geography, so you could just dis-
coming up with some type of agreement. Which lessens the impact on the citizen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This map that was handed to us, who developed this map?
Property appraiser's office.
Okay. What do these different colors mean on this map to me? Can someone explain to me that?
Mr. Griffith.
Jonathan Griffith, City of Palaca Public Works Director. The colors actually refer to separate areas that we looked at three to four years ago under a Department of Economic Opportunity grant when the city was looking at ways to expand services and through a program called Economic Diversification. And really, the consultant at the time, Urbanomics, just broke it out into specific areas by geography, so you could just disregard the colors. It was the easiest way for us to present a map to you.
Okay. My next question then, it, it might not be advantageous for these two boards to look at this without help of outside professionals, and my question is this, would the Regional Planning Council be a tool that could come in and say, you know, we can lay over the urban services boundary over these areas and maybe make some suggestions? I know our staff is busy, I know your staff is busy with the city, but we gotta bring this to a resolution, so reaching out maybe to the Regional Planning Council, would that be an option? And I'll just throw that out in the air. Mr. Suggs, maybe you could, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if that can be a help or not, but, you know, getting back to, to the map just for a minute, now that we have an idea of just what we're, we're looking at as far as the urban services, boundaries and the enclaves and that, if it's an interlocal, that will be the most beneficial aspect of being able to make this work, I think we can go from that, from, from where we are now moving forward, but looking at the impact of the areas that we're talking about. I think the first thing we have to do is we gotta look at the map itself and figure out just how to square these things off and if it's gonna, what the effects and impact that this is going to be. No one from the county side, and I'm not speaking for the county commissioner, I'm speaking for myself, but I think that no one sitting here tonight doesn't want to do what's right for, for, for the citizens of both the city and the county side of the, of the street, and that, and in a lot of cases, that's what you have. You have city and county residents living next door to each other, and so I think now that we have a tool in place that we can actually use and look at and start working these impacts and what the outcomes of that might be, we actually now have something we can work with.
Well, the reason I said that, Mr. Chairman, while I saw the floor, is that Mr. Holmes brought up a pretty good point there, that it's up to your imagination at what you want to do, and I don't know if we have the imagination to do that, and I think that's where it's gonna take someone who's probably done this before, that could come in here and say, here's the areas that we suggest, when they drive down St. John's Avenue and they cross the county line and city and all that. I mean, I think we need to do it right the first time, and what is the impact of doing it right the first time, and I don't know if we have that expertise here. I know the city's had some issues with the planners, I, I know we're understaffed right now as of today, so my question is, can we look outside of this area to accomplish what these two commissions want to do?
Um, Chair, if I could cut in, planners are not gonna be our issue on the county side. We have an interim planning director right now that's more than capable of handling this situation, having over ten years' experience in a much larger county, so that's not gonna be an issue for us. I think we go back to what I said the first time is, and kind of lose to what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, let's throw referendum out the window. If we do an interlocal agreement, we still get to the same place and the people will still be county residents. What we're talking about is services, so we're not talking about people not no longer being in the county. They'll still be in the county, but the services that are being provided to them, even as county residents, will be done through the city through an interlocal agreement. And so the question is, is does the county commission, are you guys in favor of in those enclaves, letting the city provide those services to people that are in enclaves that are surrounded by city residents? Are you guys in favor of that? Now, I would counsel you, you don't have to necessarily make that decision tonight. I'm not putting you on the spot with that, but that's really the core question that needs to be answered, and to go to my commissioners, if you guys already know tonight, you're not interested in that, that's great as well, and if you need time to determine whether or not you're interested in that, that's fine also, but if we're gonna move this issue forward, right now, I think the fundamental question is, are you guys in favor of the city providing services outside of water and wastewater in those enclaves and potentially in the urban services area? But I think for sake of conversation tonight, we're probably more so talking about the enclaves.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I think that before we can start discussing what you're asking, I think we need to, to, to add, is it forced services that you're asking us to put into those enclaves? So you're asking us to force the residents of the county to hook up the city services?
That's a call you guys are gonna have to make.
Let me, let me, before we do that, I, I think there's, I, I think there's some folks who deal with this on a daily basis, a lot more than any of us in this room. Sheriff, I'm putting you on the spot for a second. From a patrol standpoint, also I see Mr. Romei in the back of the room, Chief Grimes is in the back of the room. Would you guys maybe come forward and tell us about some of the challenges you have as it relates to the boundaries when we, when you find yourselves in a situation where you're dealing with enclaves?
Yeah, before they get up here, I, no, come on, the, the urban services are very important, but your services, I think, are more important, the troubles that you're having with these borderlines.
Well, from a law enforcement perspective, I can tell you that, once we adopted the computer-aided dispatch system that we're currently operating under in 2011, we have virtually eliminated most of those problems because all of the addresses that we currently have are hardcoded either into the city or the county, and we're aware of those, those jurisdictional lines. Prior to 2011, it certainly was an issue, and there was, there was always a question as to whether or not a residence was in the county or the city, so we often, oftentimes found ourselves looking for a garbage can or a mail receptacle or, or something that would clearly identify the, the area or the location as, as in the city or the county. I certainly understand some of the pitfalls as it relates to providing utility services and garbage and, and things of that nature, but it's, it's not so much of an issue as it has been in, in years past for us, from my perspective.
So one of the questions I've got is, within your central district, which is the city of Palaca, is in your central district, right?
Yes.
And so you find your, your, your officers find themselves making, responding to calls within the central district, that the boundaries were squared, would that lead to, would that give you greater opportunity to, to serve some of the other areas within your district?
It certainly would. I, I think that's, that's a reasonable conclusion that we could draw.
So how many guys do you normally have on staff in the central district at one time per shift?
Four.
Four, and they, what's the areas of your, of your central district?
Uh, it spans from Bosswood to East Palaca, the Highway nineteen corridor south, one hundred west to Florahome, and twenty east to approximately the bridge and the nine mall.
Right, and so we've got similar staffing within our, within our district, within our city, which kind of covers that same geographical area, and basically the calls that you make, that you respond to within the city are just in those enclaves. And so without that being the case, you would still be, you would still come through and, and do some things within the city, but it would eliminate the necessity of you being the first responder on a lot of those calls, right?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Sheriff?
No, I'll leave the depositions to you, Mayor.
I only take depositions if I can get a fee for it. No fee in here today.
I, I echo the sheriff's sentiments. We, I've been doing this for thirty years. I worked for the city when it was a true, true issue, and we definitely didn't know, you know, a lot of street corners and all. We have enclaves or areas right across the street that are, you know, in the, technically in the county, so those areas certainly are totally surrounded by the, by the city. But one thing we do in the fire service that has, I think, helped out, and I think J.R. could certainly add to this, is we, for any structure fire, we have what we call a run-card system. We're automatically sending backup stations no matter where it's at. If it's right on one side of the line or the other, we're getting, getting the same type response. We still are working on some, J.R. and I are working on some additional resources we can do and share and all that, but working together to make that happen, but rescue calls, sure, there's a, you know, there's a dispatcher in the city or the county, but as the sheriff said, you know, it's, it is hardcoded in the, the nine-one-one system, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm basically in the same boat. A lot of times, you know, it, it's unfortunate whenever, from our perspective, when the resident is in the county, and the county gets the first call for their house being on fire. We ran, we ran one maybe two or three years ago back on Lane Street, and the complaint we got was, why didn't the Palaca Fire Department come to my house? My house burnt. Well, because you're not in, you weren't in the city. So she was quite upset with us because we didn't go to her house. You know, it just happened to be one of those calls that was strictly in the county, and she thought bad of us because we didn't show up to her house. So, I mean, that does happen. I mean, if the, the call comes in inside the city limits of Palaca, we get the call first. You know, that's what me and Chief Romei can work on is, if the call comes in a geographic area, like you're speaking of the squared-off boundary, to where we could respond out to the citizens first. It doesn't matter whether they were in the city or the county, but, I mean, that's something that we could work on together. I mean, that's not a problem, but, I mean, it is unfortunate sometimes whenever you're waiting on a, a truck to come from South Palm Avenue, when you have a, a fire station sitting on Eleventh Street, and you have one sitting on Moody Road, and a prime example is the, the industrial park on Moody Road catches on fire and it's happened, and the fire department's sitting right across the street, doesn't get the original call. So, I mean, there is some issues there that could be dealt with. I think it could be dealt with on our level, and, I mean, I think it's got pretty simple solutions.
And I think that's why we're here, to help clean up and clear up some of those things. I mean, we need to be looking for efficiencies as well as the effectiveness and response time, the whole nine, and just like on your K. Larkin Fire Station, the house directly across the street or that, that area, you guys wouldn't be able to respond to that, right?
That's great. We're not on the first alarm to that particular area.
Where's the?
I mean, I mean, if, if the call across the street from the K. Larkin Station and that whole corridor, I think it's, drawing a blank.
You go instead of county?
Hudson Street. It's not Hudson Avenue, Hudson Street. All that corridor that goes up back behind the mall is inside the county. So if our guys weren't looking out the window and were to see that or didn't get the original call, we wouldn't get it until the, the county confirmed that it was a fire, and at this point, if it's on a confirmed working fire in that general area, they would call us. I mean, we, we're on the working fire page to go there, but we don't get it on the first alarm or the first assignment out.
And generally, what's the response time for the county if the county had to get to that particular location?
Well, the, that area is served by a volunteer fire station southwest, which is off of South Palm Avenue, so that would be the fire station of jurisdiction for that area. One other thing we do do is with rescue now being fire rescue, we've got an engine at the main station right there by the sheriff's office that rescue takes with them. One will get on one and one will get on the ambulance and bring both trucks, and we'll send the ambulance and the supervisor to.
I just think it's an opportunity for us to be able to logistically place equipment so that we can save our citizens. That's what we're all about, but it's, it's gonna be a work in progress between the city and the county. We need to do something about that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you. It's not for you, my question, so thank you very much, but how did this happen? How do we have a City of Palaca at the mall? How do we have a subdivision behind that? And then how do we have a fire department right across the street in the City of Palaca? Now that, we didn't do that.
Understand.
So I'm just asking, how does that happen?
It, it happened right along with Interlock and Lake Estates.
Interlock and Lake Estates?
You know what I'm saying?
No, 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 no.
These things happen.
No, no, no. Interlock and Lake Estates is not a municipality. I'm asking you, how does that happen?
The same way Rolling Hills happens when you have the back of it in the city.
You know what, how it happens?
In the county because there's poor planning.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Because it's poor planning, and when there's poor planning, regardless of when it took place, at some point you gotta fix it, and if we continue to talk about it, it's never gonna get fixed, and these guys are out on the streets every day doing this stuff, and they're fixing it as best they can with what tools we've given them, but they need more help from this commission.
That's not the question. That's not the question, and since I still have the floor, let me say that.
Your question was how did it happen?
How did it happen, exactly, and you said poor planning. Mr. Josiah, you said basically you have a planner on staff now that can fix this problem and bring us back a solution. Is that correct?
Depends on the solution that you want.
The solution that I want is for these guys to be able to know where their boundaries are and be able to respond, and these people have, have some type of security that the house across the road from the fire department is gonna get put out by the fire department right across the street, not waiting on the one to come from southwest or someplace else. And I'm, I, we're making that simple, I know, but I'm just saying, that's the solution I want. If we can't do forced annexation, the, the state legislators will not recreate the boundary, then the other thing is for us to find a mutual understanding of how we can square up these areas. That's the bottom line. That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
It's my understanding that the city has an ordinance in place, that they can offer services outside of the county for a higher cost than what's inside, and I'm saying sewer and water services, not, not, uh, fire and rescue services or fire and, and police services. So, I, I guess I'm just not quite clear tonight what y'all are asking out of the county. I mean, I'm not trying to be thick about this at all. I'm just trying to understand what it is you want from us, uh, straight up and as simple as possible, and, and when I say that, you, Mr. Folsom said he had, y'all had a planner now, and so he doesn't need planning help. What, what do you need from us? I mean, number one, we can't force annex, it's my understanding, and so if we have an interlocal agreement that says we're gonna draw the line over here, that's still forced annexing, or those people aren't gonna pay taxes unless that, unless that, that interlocal agreement allows the two, the two departments to, to go on each other's place. I mean, maybe that's what you're talking about, and like I said, I'm not trying to, to blow it up or anything. I'm just not quite sure what you're asking.
I agree with Commissioner Turner, is I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the, the city's asking the commission to do. This is, I think, the first time I've seen a map.
It is.
And we talk about enclaves, and we talk about boundaries and stuff like that, and then we talk about services. To me, it looks like we need to, maybe the city go one way, we go the other way, figure out what we want and then come back and meet, and I don't know that that's happening. I don't know, there's a lack of communication somewhere. I, I, I don't, I'm not exactly sure where it is.
It's at the point that we adjourn the meeting and we wait for the next meeting. That's where the lack of communication is taking place. It's, no, that's where the lack of communication stops. Once we leave the meetings, there's no neck, there's nothing else being done from a progressive standpoint, and so what we've got to do is, we've got to not just do this. So, you know, this map isn't new to Mr. Suggs or Mr. Reynolds because they've worked with the city. We've had these conversations beforehand when they were on the other side of the table. You know, the question came up about setting an outside agency, look at enclaves and come up with a suggestion. Well, that's what happened. The city paid for that, and it wasn't done skewed towards the city. It was done addressing a lot of those issues. The only thing we've got to do is plug in what services we want to be a part of the, of the memorandum and where it needs to be. There are suggestions within the study, and so that stuff has been done. It can be, it can be updated and revised, but it's there, and so the bulk of them, the bulk of the heavy lifting and the cost for that has already been put in place. The only thing that has to be nundown is if there wants to be updated parameters to that, that we update those parameters and get, and get something back from the company that did the original study. That's the easy part. So the enclaves are there. They're, 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 they're there. Your top two guys from a staffing standpoint are very familiar with what these issues are from both perspectives, and so it's not like we're coming in here and it's just something novel. Your top two people, your city, your, your county administrator and your deputy county administrator were just the top two people with the city, so they're aware of the issues, and they are fully capable of being able to address those and, and bring those and, and give clear understanding, and I know because Mr. Suggs has sat on the other side of this table, and we've had the same conversation during the first meeting, and so it's not because of a, it's, it's not because of a failure of understanding. It's just, we just haven't moved forward.
Mr. Mayor, I think it is a failure of understanding, at least on my part. I don't know about anybody else's.
Set a meeting up with the cities.
I'm thoroughly confused.
Set a meeting up, Mr. Suggs. He can explain it to you very clearly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, will we go any further? Mr. Campbell, didn't you have something to?
I did, and I think the mayor kind of summed it up. For me, we are now having a conversation or dialogue that should have come out in our first meeting. If there was not a clear understanding, there were three months in between those meetings that answers could have been addressed, and I do understand that Mr. Turner stepped in, so I understand his position. However, the question still remains, the three questions that Mr. Folsom put out tonight, and again, the concern is when we leave these meetings... And again, the concern is when we leave these meetings, nothing else really happens. So my recommendation is from this night that we set soft deadlines to where we can get constant updates. Because I had the same, and I'm going to talk about the city. I brought it up in our last meeting. We talk about something for the moment, we leave, we forget about it. It's time that we stop that. And I say the same thing at the end of every meeting that we have had. I'm afraid when we leave, that nothing's going to happen. Or what is our deadline? What is our timeframe? So I'm requesting that once we leave here today or during this dialogue, that we come up with soft dates that would allow us to get reports back in between the time that we meet as a unit. Because what I don't like is that we're coming here and we're having dialogue that should have happened months, almost at least a year ago, when we start having these meetings. I'm not pointing fingers as a whole body, the city and the county, let's stop it, let's move forward and let's come up with some plans to make these things happen or not happen. That's just as simple as that. Even if we have to workshop it on our respective ends, let's do what we have to do.
Yes, sir. Just.
Commissioners, I respect your position, I really do. But no one, as of the meetings that I've sat in, nobody has instructed anybody to do anything except what was in the minutes. We instructed Attorney Holmes to go and, and find out what he came and told us tonight. Could we force annex? This is the first time it's been discussed that we wanted to force services possibly, not, not trying to put words in your mouth, Mr. Folsom, we might possibly want to force services on to these people in these areas. So this, that's the first time that's been brought up tonight. I think that we need to have a, before we start directing our staff into moving in whatever direction we do, we need to have a candid discussion on what we're trying to achieve here. I haven't figured that out yet. I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Mayor has some, some idea of what he's trying to achieve. I'm sure that he's discussed this with the city manager and the other commissioners. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure personally. I'd have to have some more conversation on if I'm willing to force the people in Putnam County to receive services from the city if they don't need it. If they have a well and a septic tank now, they're not going to want to hook up the city sewer. If they did, they would have already hooked up because there's, they could go down and just say, "Well, you annexed me, you betcha. Here's your water and here's your sewer." But they don't have it because it costs that extra 6.2% or whatever in taxes. So it's not desirable to them or they'd already be there. I mean, I'm just assuming that. So, you know, I guess, I've got, I guess I've got to have some direction on what we're really asking for because we were just told we can't force annex.
If I may?
Wait a minute, just a second. Mr. Borr?
Well, I think there was a, one clear thing that was said as it relates to services in the interlocal agreement between the city and the county. And that would be the example of the K-Larkin Fire Department directly across the street is where the county would service that fire opposed to it coming off of South Putnam. That's a clear, clean example. And then we moved to Rolling Hills and there's others. As you go down St. John's Avenue, you go in and out of the county six, five to six times. These are the things that we're trying to clear up as it relates to police, sheriff services, fire department and the like. And again, our administrators, they understand, they know what challenges we face. These are the things that we're working on. It's waste.
Yes. And Mr.? Just a second. Ms. McCaskill?
I think we've identified our, our issues, what we're having and our challenges. I agree with Commissioner Turner. We need to decide what we need, what we want to do, delegate the responsibilities. But the biggest question is, how are we going to inspect what we expect? That's not happening. So I don't know if we need to take individual responsibilities and meet with these individuals that we delegate the responsibilities to and inspect so that when we come back to these meetings, we're not having the same conversations. Because it's the same thing that each of us are saying that we said about a year ago. It's getting redundant and it's kind of tiresome. So we, we just need to decide what we're going to do. We've delegated several times. We need to inspect what we expect. I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell, you can.
No, I'm with you.
Yeah. So I'm just.
I appreciate all the comments, I truly do. And I'm, I'm not trying to be not understanding about what's going on, really not. But you, nobody has yet to say what you wanted us to do. You said what you want to do, but you haven't said what you want us to do. Do you want an interlocal agreement with the county that says that, that our, our fire trucks will put out your fires and your fire trucks could put out our fires? Whoever gets there first puts out the fire? I mean, is that what we're looking for? Because that's not what I was understanding up to this point. I mean, am I missing something? What are, what are we actually wanting to accomplish?
So I guess the question for our commission is, are we ready to make that decision tonight? We're just going to keep having the same questions come up and the same conversation?
So, we've been pretty clear. If I may read the minutes from the last meeting. There was a consensus to develop a plan to address boundaries and enclaves in the last meeting. Mapping was necessary for this next meeting. All viable options would be presented at one time. Those were three things that were there. There was supposed to be from the last meeting, an opportunity for staff to get together, for both managers to come together to discuss all viable options, to look at feasibility of what services could be included in the interlocal agreement, for them to determine if there were, what deficits would be there, what was the financial impacts. That's what we discussed at the last meeting. And one of you gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong. That's what we discussed at the last meeting, for there to be some conversation about viability of the services that were being presented. And so that's what was supposed to come forward. If we're squaring off boundaries, you got to understand the feasibility aspects of it in order to determine how it works and if it's going to be mutually beneficial. So regardless of how we deal with mutual aid and all those other things, if we don't understand the financial impacts of it and we don't discuss that, then we're already in a catch 22. The, the two managers are more than capable of sitting down and discussing this and bringing back a proposal to this board, which will allow us to look at the feasibility of what's in place and make a determination from there. But it has to get done at some point. And we're just kicking the can down the road. And that's what we're asking for. We're asking for an opportunity to minimize the amount of resources that are being used in enclaves and in areas which logically the boundary should be squared off. That's the only thing we're looking at, something that's going to be mutually beneficial to both organizations and to the citizens. We're not, we're not forcing anything on anybody because until you find out what the true benefits are, then it absolutely makes no sense to have the conversations. If we find out that it's too costly to do or that the areas that we're talking about dealing with, we don't have the staffing to do it, it doesn't make any sense. But when the two gentlemen that run day-to-day operations can get together because they've got staff up underneath them, they can come together and put together a viable plan for, for the community as a whole. And that's what the next step was according to the minutes of the meeting and according to my recollection. And so that's what we're asking for, just an opportunity to look at the viability of whether an interlocal agreement is going to be something that becomes beneficial. And if certain services are off the table for that, then bring that back and say, hey, well, garbage collection is not going to be on there. Or police protection is not going to be in the same way. Or fire protection is not going to be viable for Melon Manor or whatever area it may be. But we look at it and we figure out how to do it because we, we're limited in the resources that we have and manpower and also in everything else that we've got. If we can provide greater service to other areas outside the county and the city can take some of the slack on some of this stuff, if we can look at some of these old interlocals that we got that make absolutely no sense and get this thing into a place where it actually works now, stuff that hadn't been looked at in 30 years, then it all creates cost savings overall in how we handle things efficiently for both organizations. But just to sit here and keep talking about it, it's not going to get it. It's a waste of time.
I think we're going to close it. Mr. McCaskill?
So I guess my question would be a couple of questions. Did that meeting happen? And if it didn't, why not? Why hasn't the meeting happened yet?
I take it that meeting hasn't happened.
Okay. And why not?
We can, we can pursue that. Mr. Harvey? Did you have a question?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mayor Hill brought up a good fact that they already had a plan of action. They already paid for a consultant to do it. I'd like to get a copy of that. I don't have a copy of that. I'd like to get a copy of that by July 1. I'd like to, for us to consider an August 15 date of, as Commissioner Campbell said, a soft date where we can start getting some reporting from our, our managers on this. Our next meeting is going to be in October. That'll give us plenty of time to start digesting this information. So my first ask is to get a copy of the plan. City Plaque is already paid for and have that to us by July 1. August 15 would be a date that we could start getting some reporting back on the other items that were being discussed.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'm done with the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Turner?
So just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, please, you're asking that the county manager and the city manager meet and try to come up with a proposal that we haven't set any limits on or any perimeters and bring back to this meeting for our discussion? Because we haven't discussed just the things that you just said. We haven't discussed fire, we haven't discussed water, sewer, we haven't discussed rescue, we haven't discussed police services, we haven't discussed, I mean, what would you?
That's what urban service boundaries are.
You what?
That's what urban services are.
I understand, but they're not in there right now, are they?
That's why they're discussing them.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's my whole point. You're asking our, you're asking our two administrators to come together. And I'm just asking, I really am.
Yes, sir.
Are you asking our two administrators to get together and come up with a proposal for us to discuss at the next meeting that we have that would, for an interlocal agreement between us and them that would allow our services to cross over? What are you asking exactly as far as services?
I'm asking for our two administrators to come together to look at the prospects of an, of an interlocal agreement which deals with urban service boundaries and to give us a proposal that they can, that's mutually agreeable upon the two of them.
Okay. Then I'm all, if there's no comments here, I'm going to put you two on the hot seat. What do you need from us?
Just direction. Sounds like we have.
Okay. No, do you feel like, again, right, I want to know, what do you need from us?
If you're asking me?
Yes, sir, I am.
I'm going to need more than direction.
Okay. What are you seeking?
And this is what I mean by more than direction. You guys are going to have to know you want us to look at all services and what that means for you. So now I'm talking to the county. What that means for you fire-wise, what that means for you for any police, sheriff, whatever other services they are, you need to know what that impact is. And the reason why I'm mentioning it is because that impact is going to take time for your staff to be able to develop the numbers to tell you whether or not it's financially feasible or not. At the same time, you guys will be going through a budget process. So I don't want to speak for them, but I know that's a lot of work. And so, and I'm being honest with you, I know that's a lot of work for them to have to run those numbers. And so I think clear direction is going to be very important, don't get me wrong. But I think at the same time, it's understanding to be able to get the numbers back to you in the way that you want them, from a county's standpoint, is going to take a lot of work and time. And the reason I'm saying from a county's standpoint is because if you're asking me, do I want an interlocal agreement, will we take the services? Yes. I don't have to run those numbers per se because why? I'm going to be getting new revenues for services that either we've already been providing or an enhancement of services to the residents.
Mr. Folsom, I spent the last 30 minutes trying to get that clear direction for you.
Right.
Evidently it's not possible because I can't get it for me either. So.
I, I think what we have is everybody's going in different directions. If what, I think what we're really trying to do is just square up everything. So if we first off drew everything squared up and then put a list of what our problems, pros and cons would be in, in this particular area and this particular area, would that clarify some things for us? Go ahead, Mr. Borr.
I, I think Commissioner Harvey has put dates here for the administrator, the county administrator, as well as city manager. We just need to know if those dates are going to work. And then what is the priority? What should be worked on first? Since this is a, it's going to be a lot of work from what I'm understanding. So I think a priority need to be set as to what of those services is, is the most important to work on first or we can deliver first. I think we need to take all those things in consideration, along with the dates of the July 1st, of the August 15th, and then we're coming back in September.
But I think it's my understanding they, we're not clear on the services that we're asking. Is that what we're still saying?
Well, I'll be clear.
All the services.
The county, the city, from the city's perspective, we're talking all services.
Okay.
That's why I say priority.
So let's list them. Fire, water, wastewater, police.
Clear.
Bobby, trash.
So it's clear to us it's the city. My question is, is the county clear with that? And that, I guess, goes by the Commissioner Turner. Are you understanding what's being?
No, ma'am, I certainly am not.
Okay, so this is, this is what I'm suggesting that we have, that Mr. Somebody, and I'm with respect, meet with Mr. Turner.
Are you clear?
To get, I mean, to get an understanding because I just, I think we're, we're causing more confusion by continuing to have this circle of dialogue. Because I understand where Mr. Turner is coming from. And the only thing that it's going to take is having a one-on-one meeting with him, be it the city have that meeting with him or the county and the city, to kind of clear up what it is that he's wanting or that, what we want. Because again, we're talking in a circle. Everybody is pretty much saying the same thing. We have drop date deadlines. Can we please move on?
Chair, from, so I can, from my commission, we're fine. I think what Mr. Commissioner Turner is trying to get is an understanding from his commissioners, do they realize what the county, what the city just asked us for? And are we willing to look into those services for the city to take those services on through an interlocal agreement? That's the question I think he's asking. Because if you're asking us, I just told you what services we want, we're clear. So the question now becomes, okay, is the county willing and fine with us discussing and moving those services through an interlocal agreement to the city?
So we're, you're asking us, now I'm just asking.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm trying to be crystal clear here.
Yes, sir.
You're asking us as the county to sign an interlocal agreement with the city that would allow you to force all the people in your city, wherever you draw the boundaries with your pencil, you're going to force every one of them to go to the city for those services?
We're going to provide them that opportunity.
Okay. So why do you need an interlocal agreement to ask them if they want to do it? They can always just join the city and annex anytime they want to. Why do you need this interlocal agreement?
Because we're not trying to do forced annexation or referendum.
Okay, well, why can't you just go ask them? Why do you need an interlocal, I'm, I'm asking, I don't know. Why, why do you need to, an interlocal agreement to go ask them to annex?
Because we don't want to annex them.
You just want them to buy the services?
Correct.
Okay.
Especially for those that are already in the enclaves. We know getting them to annex is going to be tough. I think the attorney has circled back.
I think, well, I think, right, we've, we've done this long enough. You've got some information that you can bring back here and we would like to have it distributed as soon as you could, say sometime in July. We'd like to see this information. I think what we really need, we're all looking at this little picture. I personally like to see something that you can actually see these pockets and say, that's an area that's the county, that's an area that's the city, that's an area that's county. And then we can mark them A, B, C, D, I don't care how it's done, so that we, we can see those and we can see what services are in that area. But right now, we're not getting anywhere with this. I think what we need is all of us need to get the information that you have and I think next time we need to have a bigger map. And I'm open for any discussion on that in order to close this up. Any suggestions here? Okay, then in that case, we will take a five-minute break. To move to the business park, is there any conversation to be made on the business park? Are you ready, Tony? Okay. All right, so let's move to the business park. An update on status of paperwork submitted to the City of Platte. Who's going to handle this?
I will.
No, go ahead, Doc.
I believe that we've come up with a solution. I've spoken with the city manager about it, the county manager about it, the city manager about it, the city's planner. Essentially, the way this whole thing started off was the county had applied for a subdivision. So been a subdivision plat for approval. Things sort of went awry at that point. A different city, city employee found that the application didn't meet the technical requirements of our subdivision ordinance. And the counties, because you didn't have lot sizes, you didn't have lot configurations, you didn't have many of the things that our subdivision ordinance required. The county wanted the flexibility of not having a specific lot boundary or specific lot shapes because you didn't know what the user was going to be. And the user might have a different need for, for a different sized parcel than what you had already configured. It, it appears to us that, well, the idea of an interlocal agreement came up, interlocal agreement came up. We've talked about it. We think it's very doable. The interlocal agreement would be fairly straightforward. You wouldn't have to configure your lots. You've already got a drainage plan approved by the water management district. You've already got the roads and we've been advised that you don't plan on any new roads. And you already have utility easements in place and actually you have some utilities in place, in the easements. So our proposal simply be we enter into an interlocal agreement, we can get together with staff and draft. When you have a user, you have a use, you have a desire to sell property, you know how much property you're going to sell because at that point you should. If the user wants five acres or three acres or one acre, you'll know it at that point if he's coming to you and asking for something specific. At that point, you submit a site plan to the city. On that site plan, you would provide the detail that you would need for basic approval, which would be essentially your lot size and boundaries, how your property is accessed by the utility easements that are already there or other easements, where you have your road access and how your site plan is going to correspond to or compare to the water management district's drainage plan or the drainage plan you had approved by the water management district. You meet those criteria and the city issues you approval on your site plan when you go to, and you, you know, your site plan should also have where your building outline is going to be. And then you apply for your building permit, start building and, and that's as shovelled already as you can be.
Okay.
Wouldn't make you go through another formal subdivision approval process. Spoken to Steve about it. He's looked at our, at our subdivision ordinance and believes that the interlocal agreement would not run afoul of it. So from our perspective, we can, we can do that right.
Okay, so as I understand it, everything's good? If we had a customer, we just get what he, they desire to have there, bring it to you and, and, and that's pretty much it? Yes, sir?
Yes, the, that's very consistent, thank you, Mr. Holmes, with, with our previous discussions. We actually do have a draft prepared that, that we did provide to the city a number of months ago and it's very consistent with, with what Mr. Holmes just indicated. And we certainly are more than willing to sit down and talk about any sort of revisions that may need to be necessary for the interlocal agreement in order to put this matter to bed once and for all.
Okay. Yay, that's a way to go.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, it, not at this meeting, you're not. Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, yes, how can I not? Thank you very much. And I appreciate the two attorneys getting together and working this out. This has been the bone of contention for a while and it really needs to come in. And that's been my thing is how do we know what lot sizes we want until somebody wants to come in and buy? And then we can create lots and we can create all this. So I think that's good. I do have one question. I think a little caution here. We did get a grant to mat that park and do we, do we have some responsibilities there about that? And we need to take a look at that if we did. So, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I can answer that. The grant, what Mr. Hammond did prior to his retirement, he did work with the state basically surveying the property and using that grant, consistent with the grant requirements, to, to basically survey, provide as-built drawings of, of what is out there, which, which gives us the starting point where we're at today. So everybody kind of knows, you know, what's in the ground, what's on the ground. And then from there, we're all on the same page and the grant funds were used for that purpose.
Yes, and I'd like to make a public apology to our city attorney, Donald Holmes, about the meandering the lines and meeting with staff, with the county and what have you. So I just want to make a public apology to him. He had done his homework, he had sent the email and it's oversight on my part. So, thanks, thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Okay. Mr. LaCast, if you could speak. I know you were waiting to talk.
I'm, my first meeting with the city or the county commission. Steve Lochnict, I am the AICP planner for twenty-some years. I worked quite a long time with Latua County. I just want to say, I just got introduced to this item just in the last couple of days. Mr. Holmes has emailed and we spoke on the phone. There are other places, other jurisdictions where they don't require a plat for a commercial or industrial park. It's not only, that's why I, I was questioning at first why they even made the request, I guess. I did look at the code for the city. It, it is basically oriented to residential plating, although I see no problem with the approach that the attorneys are taking. I think it's a good approach and I think it's consistent with what I've seen in other jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on this? Okay, then we'll move to, now what I have here is other interlocal agreements. I'm not exactly sure what this is.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll take that. We just, we, as everybody knows, we've just had our chief building official resign for, for a position in South Florida and just wanted to make sure that the city knew that our, our department was, was still going to be able to provide the services that we're currently providing, that there should be no hiccups with that. And if they see anything, that just please let us know.
Okay, so that's out here to the city. We got any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that too.
Do you have comments?
Yes, sir. While we're on interlocal agreements, I'd like to see that sometime in the not-too-distant future, start looking at the, of quite a few of the interlocal agreements the city and the county has. And while maybe, Terry, if y'all end up having your meeting that we discussed earlier tonight, you could bring up some of those interlocal agreements for, for discussion and see exactly where they are and, and what's going on. And last time around, we had a St. John's Avenue update. If y'all don't mind, I would request that we would have another St. John's Avenue update during this meeting. I didn't see it on the agenda. So maybe it's part of an interlocal agreement is the reason why I brought it up during, under interlocal agreements. So could we ask press to come forward?
Commissioner Turner, thank you for bringing that up. Caroline Tingle calls me almost weekly about things like that. She's too sweet to be upset, so.
Press, last, at the last meeting, we had, you said that we were going to try it sometime in the not-too-distant future to go in there and recover that. Or I don't know if you were going to mill it or just recover it or what your plan was. And that was going to take us through and to the point where the city changed the pipes they needed to change and whatever and, and sometime in the future. I meant to ask it then, but I guess it just slipped my mind until after the meeting. Why can't we just go out there and patch the holes in the road? I mean, I see the state do it every day. I mean, we're on a highway. They go out and they patch a hole in the road. I mean, wouldn't that be a lot less money than going and resurfacing the whole road and for four or five years while the city changes their pipes?
We've pretty much have done that, to be honest with you. We've got patches throughout a hole.
Didn't do a very good job.
Well, I, I can, I can agree with you. It's, it's been a patchwork quilt out there, to be honest with you. But, no, we do, it's in the process. We're dealing with our consultant now with the DOT money. We've got all the clearance from DOT. It'll be a milling and resurfacing, you know, and we, we know, as I keep saying, hopefully in the next, you know, three to five years, we get all the things worked out with the city on the water main, sewer mains and the drainage that when we rebuild the road completely, it needs a lot of base work too. I mean, we're, we're putting the Band-Aid on it. I'm not going to say any different. We're putting the Band-Aid on it, but it will certainly increase the probability on that road for foreseeable future till we get ready to do all this work on it. So I meant, I understand what you're saying, but I think if we did that, we'd be sitting right back here another year from now asking, why didn't we just go ahead and redo the whole thing?
Where's the money coming from to pay that? Is it coming out of some of your re-milling budget that you already have?
Sure, this is DOT, this is DOT money. Yes, it's a DOT grant we got to do this work. We explained the situation to them and they have agreed that we can use this money to do the resurfacing and we've already talked about reapplying for additional monies in the future and additional work program, actually redo the road once all the other utility work is done.
Okay, do you have a timeframe or a schedule on when you're going to mill that road and redo it?
We'll have it done, I'm going to say this year, definitely this, this fiscal year.
Excuse, are, are we still working on the 2020 plan for the St. John's from Riverfront down in the business, well, not the business park, but yeah, around the business park area? We're going to be doing the whole thing still 2020 is on, on schedule?
Yeah, we're looking at that. And I think Jonathan, didn't we submit the top grant for the other section of St. John's back towards the railroad? So that was submitted also.
So I guess you're just going to have to hear from Ms. Tingle from now until Christmas.
No, that's not what he said. That's what I, my next answer was. He said this fiscal year, which ends September 30th. That's right. So you'll have that done before this fiscal year's over with September 30th. I've only got a few more months. I'm good. I can get through Christmas. She'll be a happy camper. We'll put a bow on it and you can give it to her for Christmas. There you go. I'm, I'm going to have her watch this. Seven thirty, you said that. Hey, any other questions?
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Tompkins? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tompkins. All right, let's move to festivals and community events. Who wants to take this one?
I'll take it. The last time we was here, we talked about possibly doing something in partnership together. We also stressed the importance of the community having festivals and events that they can count on and making sure those festivals are not in the hands of a person or even a few people, but making sure festivals like the Blue Crab Festivals and others have a longstanding tradition, that have a longstanding tradition here in Putnam County and City of Platte that those things continue. And so as a result, with Blue Crab being canceled for this year, we wanted to bring a conversation piece to say, is there a festival or something? piece to say, is there a festival or something and replace a Blue Crab or anything that we wanna do as Putnam County as a whole, so that's not just the county, not just the city, uh, that's the Rotarians, that's the Kowans, that's the Chamber, uh, all the nonprofit agencies, uh, within the community, and we do something together that benefits the community as a whole. So, that was just a talking piece, because we mentioned it last time, and seeing there's anything that you guys may want to do, are you interested in partnering with us, and if you're interested in partnering with us, then me and the, um, county manager get together and figure out some creative ways that we can partner on a festival like the Blue Crab or something similar to it. If not, um, it was just a request.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I, I think that's great, didn't the Rotary Clubs recently get together, Mr. Manager, and, um, submit a proposal for Blue Crab for next year?
Not that I'm aware of.
I was understanding they were walking in the next day to do that. Okay, talk is right now through the Rotary Clubs throughout the county, is to do something in that nature to keep, to do Blue Crab again, and transparency is my big thing with that, I, I think it's important that when organizations put on things, that the money that is raised stays in this community to help this community as much as possible, and, um, I think that's a, that would be when you sit down and talk, that would be something that this commissioner would be interested in.
I think even if someone does come do that, do something that we can, that's perfectly fine, however, we still have the opportunity to create some, create something that is, um, true to Palaka and what we want to have, Memorial Day is just one weekend out of the year, um, but there's other holidays, there's other opportunities that we can come together as a community to host an event that is really true to Palaka and Putnam County, where we all benefit from it.
I just asked, does, does anybody here know what it costs the city to, to deal with the Blue Crab Festival, 'cause you've got additional police force, you have, uh, there's a lot of other trash pickup and such, does anybody have a, a number of what that does cost?
Does it cost us or what our fees are?
Well, what does it actually cost the city for the event?
Our fees are somewhere around twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, now, and the twenty thousand, that includes fire, uh, police?
Fire, police permitting, everything.
And cleanup at the end of the?
Mm-hmm, sanitation's included.
Okay, so that's your total cost, okay?
Give or take.
To curiosity, yes, sir, do you have?
But the event doesn't need to be as big as they, they have been in the past, um, so if you whittle that event down to, say, the size of a catfish festival that Crescent City does, it's a one-day event, uh, Commissioner Pickens has a lot of expertise in that, and the cost doesn't cost the city that much money at that time.
So, would a one-day be ten thousand dollars?
We're still talking about this one side, we're talking about whether the county's trying to get a joint force with us to make it happen, if not, this conversation is no other.
Well, I'm just looking at, what we're looking at is a dead cost regardless of what else happens.
What was your comment? Justin, yes, sir?
My comment was, what is, I, I know we're basing it on the city, but right now, I think the question was, is the county willing to join forces, and if the county is willing to join forces, then I think we create a, even if it's the commission or a delegated, um, person on behalf of the commissioner, make a force to kinda go forth and move forward with, um, the planning of, so I think it was kinda premature to talk about the causes, um, being that we don't know what it exactly is that we're trying to do, we just want to entertain the idea of, do we want to do something, if so, do we wanna do it joint together, if not, the city will take and do what we have to do to make it happen, if that's the pleasure of our board.
Okay, yeah, my only comment is, because if, if we did a joint, we're gonna have joint police, we're still gonna have to pay this, uh, still money that we're gonna have to, a, as a county or a city, we're gonna have to put that money out.
I think that comes as a result of the meetings that will be had amongst the people that are delegated, once we determine what kind of festival it is that we want to have, if we wanna have a one-day festival, if we wanna have it before the, leading up to the Fourth of July events, if we wanna have it on Memorial Day weekend, I think those are questions that will lead to the bigger, um, picture of the cost of everything, so it has to be determined what kind of event it is that we want to have first before we can have that conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, can I make a comment on, that's what I would feel as a commissioner, for me to put support to it, um, I'd have to find out what the city was planning to do, what is gonna benefit, how, um, what kind of festival, how long it was gonna be, what weekend, whatever, it'd have to be really planned out before I'm gonna just say, I'll, I'll support it as a county commissioner.
Okay, Mayor Hill?
I think, um, you also need to be mindful of the fact that, uh, Buddy Thompson indicated that they would be trying to apply for that same weekend again, um, with Blue Crab, uh, with their Blue Crab organization, you've got an additional community organization that's interested in the festival for that same weekend, um, as well, and I know one of the things that we discussed in our last, in our commission meeting, as related to Blue Crab, was actually having a workshop where we brought the community in to discuss, um, the interests as, as a whole, I've spoken to a representative from the Crescent City Rotary Group that's interested in coming over as well, um, and so there are a lot of people who are interested in the weekend, I, I mean, it can, but I think the workshop brings it all into perspective where everybody interested comes to the table, and, you know, but it's so many more weekends that are available outside of Blue Crab where, you know, we, if all these ideas are what they profess to be, it creates so many more opportunities for tourism within our community, so I, I think just sitting down and having a workshop where we discuss, um, the future of festivals in this community from the city, you know, within the city limits, um, or overall, is, is gonna be helpful.
Yes, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, um, just one thing I, I think is important, um, really to, to get out there for people to know, um, something that, that I actually learned in my short time as interim county administrator, um, is over the years, the, the county has been contributing financially to many of these events, um, to the waiver of tipping fees at the county landfill, um, and you talk about a lot of trash, uh, coming out of a number of these events, and, and the county has been contributing, um, in kind by, by waiving those fees, which, which amount to considerable amount of money.
Certainly, I appreciate that. Any other comments on the festivals? Okay, seeing none, let's move to the fun topic of water rates.
I'll, I'll own up to that one, Mr. Chairman, uh, given the fact that we just went through a, uh, discussion of this a couple weeks ago, not we, but, well, yes, we, based on some information, uh, that the city was proposing, and as we're going through our budget at this point in time, you know, we just, we're looking at what might be on the horizon and drafting our budget, because with the rates that we're, that was being proposed, this is, like I said, this is gonna cost us about three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars of our, of our general fund money this year if we go to that, that rate, so I'm just kinda looking for some direction from the city, if this discussion's gonna come back or, or not, because we got a budget for it.
Okay.
It's voted down in the last meeting.
Okay, so you don't see that happening this year?
Could, it could, it could awaken, I would think that it would, um, I think the rates will be less than, if it does come, I could come back at a lesser rate, um, and I think the conversations will take place beforehand, Mr. Griffith, if you wanna come for, do you wanna come up?
Yes, sir, a, as discussed at that city commission workshop, the proposed rate structure will be brought back to the commission for discussion, uh, during the budget process. Um, what we're looking at is a different rate model, which will probably put more of the operational costs in the base rate calculation, which will bring the consumption charge down, which would be a positive impact to your projections, uh, Mr. Suggs and Mr. Reynolds. Right now, the cost is around five seventy-seven per thousand gallons, that's a big difference from what we currently charge, so, not to get into too much detail, but that's because a lot of the operational cost is put into the consumption charge, uh, we have the ability to go back and change that model, and we'll be having some conversations with the county, as well as some of the other larger institutional uses, so that we can project the impact to them and model our rates accordingly.
I thank you for that.
Also, just, just keep in mind that the water quality and water pipes have been an ongoing theme in Putnam County, in the City Palaka in particular, um, it's an issue that needs to be addressed, um, the mayor talks about all the time about not kicking the can down the road, um, and we're trying to stop doing that, um, it's a personal belief of mine that everybody deserves clean drinking water, uh, no matter where you live at, no matter your socioeconomic status, uh, that you should have that, uh, right and that availability provided by the municipality, and so, we're gonna have to address the water rates, I'm telling you, the water rates are gonna be higher, uh, especially for governmental units and larger users than they currently are, um, I personally believe that Walmart should not be paying the same base rate as someone's grandmother, I just don't believe that, I don't think that the water bill that Walmart produces here in the City of Palaka should be three to four thousand dollars less a month than it is than what they're paying in St. John's County, similar-sized buildings, similar-sized users, I just don't believe that. So, while it is, we're gonna work with the larger users to bring the cost down, it will be an increase in cost, um, and to some degree, it will be substantial, because we're gonna base that cost, uh, like we do now, on the size of your meter, the city just ate the cost of a twenty thousand dollar meter for somebody who's paying nineteen dollars and some change in base rate, I don't think that's equitable, I don't think that's fair, because when we do that, that means more of the weight is carried by the little old ladies and everybody else in the community, so as a result, we're gonna try to work on our numbers to get them, um, down, uh, to compensate for those higher-end users, but I do wanna be clear that the rate is going to be higher than what people are customarily to paying, um, that's unfortunately, uh, unfortunate, but it's just a situation where the rates have just not been adequately addressed in years, and my commission is really trying to do that, because they recognize that clean drinking water should matter, and it does matter to us, and there's gonna be a cost associated with us, and it's a tough decision that's gonna have to be made, and it's gonna have to be made at some point, so, we will do a jo, a good job, um, at educating everybody, bringing in the bigger users to sit down and kinda go through the rates and get an understanding, and let you guys know what we're gonna be doing, but I wanna be clear in that the rates are going to be higher than what is customarily been paid.
Well, that's not what we wanted to hear, but that's, we want the information, yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
Okay, so, just where I'm clear, Mr. Folsom, uh, so far tonight, you've asked us to pay the city for services in the en, in the county enclaves that are inside the city, you want us to pay you for that, you want us to pay higher water bills sometime in the not-too-distant future to the tune of quite a bit possibly, um, maybe the discussion also needs to be tonight, that, um, that the city has not taken any of our affluent, or, or, uh, leach aid out at the landfill since February, but we're still letting them dump their sludge for free in our landfill, that's not being said, I mean, there's not, you, you act like, to me, it, it's like y'all are, that we're not doing anything, and it's more, 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 I get the concept, but by the same token, let's go ahead and discuss the whole picture instead of just the parts that increases revenue for the county, I mean, for the city out of the county's coffers, let's talk about the whole thing perhaps, like how to get it back to even, where it's fair for both sides, for all our inter-local agreements to kinda wash out in the end and be about the same, that's what being neighborly is, so...
I, um, I agree, um, I think that is, that's where the county feels, that the county needs to put those issues on the next joint meeting, and we need to discuss them, I don't think the county should hold back any items that it wants to discuss, the reason why it appears the way it appears tonight is because that's what the city chose to put on the agenda, um, and so, as a result, those are the things that are priority for us, um, and the water rate is, is unfortunate, I, I will tell you, it is unfortunate, but it's an issue that we've got to address, um, and we've got to address it soon.
The reality is, you got sixty million dollars worth of water lines that have to be replaced, twenty-eight million dollars worth of galvanized water lines that have to be replaced, that go back, we've got lines that go back to eighteen eighty-six, the year, the can has been kicked down the road until the point that it can't be kicked anymore, orange drinking water's not acceptable for anybody, um, and so, we've got to deal with infrastructure issues, it's all around the country, but we refuse to be Flint, Michigan, and so, we're gonna address them, um, we were not comfortable in the last meeting with addressing them at the tone of a ten thousand dollar per month hike for the sheriff's office or for any other entity, um, for that, for that reason, but we will get to a point where our water rates are, or at a point where we are actually, we can sustain, and we can provide quality service, and we can do infrastructure upgrades so that we can meet the needs of our citizens, so there aren't any life safety issues, so that we don't have any toxins that cause cancer, um, sitting in still water, so we, we will deal with those issues, and it's gonna come with an uncomfortable cost to, to individuals overall, even our citizens within the city, so it's just not that we're singling the city out, the county out in any way, it's that we're doing what's necessary to move this community forward as a whole, and so, portable drinking water is a very critical issue, our stormwater is a, our stormwater drainage is a very critical issue, and those are all things that we have to address, um, and, and more than anything else, I mean, everybody hates to, to have any type of increase, but we wanna make sure that we have a conversation so that it doesn't come at the risk of losing jobs or making critical cuts from any standpoint, and that's why I wasn't voted up the last time, but it's necessary, and it, it's not something that you can continually just deny, because at some point, it becomes real, that, that twelve-inch line that broke was real when the dialysis center had to not, had to cancel thirty-five, like, critical appointments, and so, we, there's something that has to be done, and we're doing it.
I think I speak for all of us, we understand where you're coming from, what we're asking, I know, is if the rates are gonna go up, we need notice, where, you know, we're trying to put a budget together, and, uh, it's like any household, we need notice, so hopefully, if you come up with a sum, you will put that out for everybody that this is gonna happen next year, or, or, so, you know, you're, they're not blindsided, is basically what I'm looking at, and that's just my comments, does anyone else have a comment in here?
Yes, I'm, well, again, I'm, I'm gonna talk back about it, the rate structure again, I mean, is there any way that the rate structure doesn't impact the county in a, in a, in a, in a big way, we need to make sure that the rate is, I, I, incrementally put in, in a way to where it's just not infusing this big amount of money that we're, we're talking about, if you're talking about all at once and they say three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's huge in a short period of time, that wouldn't give them time enough to make, uh, preparations, I'm, uh, I'm a big fan of working with people, again, they're doing some things for the city, bring those out, and let's see how we can make this thing equitable.
And that, that's one of the things, Commissioner, that, uh, staff has really been mindful of, I, I can tell you that both Mr. Griffith and Mr. Reynolds have been collaborating and speaking about these rates, um, and I know they've included the sheriff's office in some of those communications as well, um, just to make sure, and those are some of the larger users, there are other users out there in the private sector as well, um, but they are looking at all ways to, to do this, from the adjustments of the rates that Mr. Griffith has done thus far, um, to any other viable solution that's out there, so I'm sure that the solutions that come out, um, will continue to have that collaboration between all involved entities that may be affected, so that they will have just noticed during this budgeting season, uh, as well as in the future, to be able to make this work, and so that it doesn't create a significant detriment to anyone.
Yes, please do not print in the paper three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he was just speaking tongue-in-cheek, I don't think that's a legitimate.
No, sir, that is not tongue-in-cheek.
That's a legitimate number?
That's a legitimate number.
Well, no, I just, I threw a number out there.
Please, please share that with us.
Absolutely, I just.
That's the first time we heard of it.
I threw a number out there, that's not, uh, a, a real number, I, and that's not what I meant there, so, it's just a, a number put out there that could possibly be in the, the, the area, what have you, so, that's.
Thank you.
Not the exact number.
Mr. Suggs, do you have any comment on that?
I'm good, sir, thank you.
Good, yep, good, good, okay, well then, let's close that subject, and let's go to our next meeting, October ninth or the twenty-third, let's, uh...
October ninth.
Ninth?
Like the ninth.
Is everybody in agreement for the ninth?
Let me look it, I'm sorry.
Why are you sorry?
Okay.
She's good.
Okay, our next meeting will be October ninth, any other comments? I think we are finished for the ninth.